The Planning and Zoning Board, Detective Neville, come to order. December the seventh, Pearl Harbor Day. Just remember those people publicly. And having said that, would you hold the roll?
Mr. Russell?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Ms. Danny?
Here.
I know that Ms. Jennifer will not be here. Dr. Miller? Mr. Stroud?
Here.
Mr. Thorpe?
Yeah.
I just want to remind everybody when you speak, please, please, please speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Okay, this is the part of the meeting where we have public participation. Before we start that, anyone who wishes to speak on any matter tonight, could you get a card off the corner there and fill it out? Give it to, uh, just put it on the corner of the table there with David. And if you want, even if you don't know right now you're going to speak, something comes up, it's always a good thing, just have a card filled out. As you wish. Is there anything the, anyone in the public wishes to bring forward to the PMZ Board that does not concern tonight's agenda? Okay. This is your chance to put it before us. Seeing no, uh, we'll go into the agenda, old business nine. It's been completed. New business, uh, approved the minutes of the last meeting. You have before you those minutes, are there any additions or corrections to those minutes of October 12? Okay, may I have a motion to approve or disapprove? Motion to approve? Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Hold the roll.
Mr. Russell?
Or.
Mr. Price?
Or.
Ms. Danny?
Or.
Mr. Stroud?
Or.
And Mr. Thorpe?
Or.
Okay, we're going into the quasi judicial comprehensive plan amendment. Portion of our agenda, considering, consideration of the supplemental lots, an application for the division of vacant land located at the eastern, eastern terminals of East Central Boulevard and Ridgewood Avenue. The parcels are in the record, and without further ado, I'll just ask David Dickey to lead us into the discussion.
All right, thank you, Chairman Russell, and good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you, you're listening.
Oh, good evening. Good evening, Dave.
Thank you, I'm, I'm just kidding. I know this sounds cliche or whatever, but it is nice seeing you guys. Working these matters, it's a good, very good group we have here. Um, as the chairman indicated, this application is for a supplemental lot split. And we'll get a little bit into that in a few minutes on what exactly that means, but I would like to stay fairly close to the script this evening, and with script, I mean the agenda cover that was written and that you've received. And so I'll start in the summary section. Uh, in summary, the applicant owns two tax parcels, which consists of a portion of Lot 21. And the tax parcels were created by deed in the Brevard County Property Appraiser, with the Brevard County Property Appraiser. The city has no official record of the city authorizing the subdivision of Lot 21 into two developable lots as required by the city subdivision regulation. The applicant seeks a lot split approval by the city to recognize the two tax parcels as two developable lots. Now, as the board recalls, um, we, I'm going to refer to it as the initial lot split application. Uh, that was presented to the Planning and Zoning Board at its August 3rd meeting. And at that time, um, the Planning and Zoning Board recommended approval. And that approval was based on staff recommendation. Uh, it was also included a recommendation or a position from the city's consulting engineer on this particular case, uh, Mike Allen. Uh, I, I will note that Mr. Allen is in the, um, chambers this evening. So if the, if the board has any specific questions of Mr. Allen, he is available to answer those. The initial lot split survey was all, has already been reviewed by the board and is currently being considered by the city council for a final decision. This supplemental alternate, alternative application was submitted by the applicant after the city council hearing and is now being presented to the Planning and Zoning Board for consideration and recommendation prior to it going back to the council on December 20th of this year, here in a few weeks. Again, the board recommended approval of the initial lot split application based on an examination of the minimum lot requirements found in Section 98b4 of city code. This recommendation was supported by the city's consulting engineer. And, uh, that is, uh, we'll go through the attachment, but attachment three is, is, uh, is an email that we received from Mr. Allen indicating his, his position. As shown in the applicant's initial survey, the proposed southern lot would be considered a corner lot and does not appear to, that its width, which is seventy, which was, was seventy-six feet, complied with the fifteen percent requirement as contained in Section 98. Because the adjacent lot on East Central Boulevard as it exists today is a hundred feet in width. In other words, the proposed corner lot would be required to be a minimum of a hundred and fifteen feet in order to comply with Chapter 98. The board at its August 3rd meeting did not have benefit of this information. The staff recommendation was really focused on the, um, Chapter 110 R1 zoning requirements. Notably, minimum width, minimum depth, and minimum lot area. That's, that was primarily what the staff and Mr. Allen based our, our recommendations on for the initial lot split application. The board's August recommendation was taken to the city council, I'm at the top of page two now, at its October 18th meeting. Due to the corner lot's inconsistency with the minimum code requirements, primarily the fifteen percent requirement in Chapter 98, staff recommended three options related to the initial lot split that the council could consider. Number one, straight up deny the application. Number two, deny the applicant's request for a lot split, but approve the removal of the western twenty-five feet from the original Lot 21 and allow the development of one single family residence. In a, in a minute, we're going to show a number of slides, and so that twenty-five foot reference that I just made is going to hopefully come into focus. The third option was to approve the application. And as you can see there in paragraph three, about midway down in the paragraph, it says, as a condition of approval, a variance would be required because the reduced size of the proposed southern lot, um, report, uh, and it was dealing with that fifteen percent requirement. So there would have to be a variance to the subdivision regulations to address that minute, that fifteen percent requirement. After a lengthy discussion, the council approved option two and asked the city attorney to bring back a proposed order for the lot split and to recognize the property owned by the applicant as one developable lot. Final decision by the city council on the lot split application is still pending. And council will be considering the proposed recommended order again at its, its meeting on the 20th later this month. Soon after the October 18th council meeting, Mr. DeChristopher submitted on November 1st a supplemental alternative lot split survey plan, requesting that it be added to the record and be considered part of his lot split application. The supplemental lot split application proposes a supplemental lot split survey depicting a revised lot configuration, which according to the applicant addresses the fifteen percent requirement. And that is shown in attachment six, and we'll go through the attachments here in a little bit. The supplemental lot split application, which is here this evening, proposes a different lot split configuration than what's contained in the initial application. And still is to be considered by the council for a final decision. Again, that's important, the council has not made a final decision on the initial application. As such, from a procedural standpoint, staff believes the al- alternative supplemental lot split should be considered by the board prior to it being presented to the council. Which, again, will resume at the December 20th meeting. I'm not going to go into all the detail, I think it's in the record as far as the, uh, the timeline that we present here, I will hit a couple of highlights. In 1962, the original plat of this area was reported. And as, uh, can be seen on the monitor in front of you, I believe it's there. Um, and for the audience, it's, it's the plat that's indicated up here on the large monitors on the wall. Yeah, that's, that's, let's stay right there, Patty. This is the, this is a blow up of the original plat, Beach Gardens plat, platted in 1962. This is what the subject parcel, parcels looked like back in 1962. The important parcels are in parcel 20 and 21, specifically parcel 21. What the story is on the next two pages as far as chain of title and, um, the timeline, what it's going to show us is what happened to that original Lot 21. I want to point out to the board, a couple of important dimensions to look at, keep in mind. That northern property line on parcel 21 is a hundred and fifteen feet in length, that's important. Also, the, um, western property line at a hundred and fifty-two point oh two, that's an important dimension as well, okay? Patty, can we take a look at the next? Slide, please? Okay. This parcel is showing us today's lot configuration. This is a aerial, uh, this is a, a repository of, of records that is maintained by the Brevard County Property Appraisers Office, this is what you would see today. You wouldn't see those yellow and red marks there, but I'll, I'll explain those. Um, but what you would see are those property lines. And the, the yellow marks along the northern property line are what the, the dimensions of those lots today. And I want to point out that the dimension that's shown on the easternmost parcel, right next to Ridgewood. You can see it's a hundred and twenty-five feet. You recall back, the original platted lot was a hundred and fifty feet. So, I'm not going to say magically, but twenty-five feet just has disappeared from that original plat of a hundred and fifty feet, we'll talk about that. But also, I want to point out an important point is that these one, two, three, four, five, six, seven lots that we're looking at here were originally those three lots in the original plat. Would you, would you flip back to that, Patty, please? Okay. These three lots are now seven lots. And we include in the, in the agenda.
Let's dig around that phone just a little bit. The three lots you see on the overhead at this time are the lots that are platted into our city plat, right?
Correct.
Now go to the next slide, Patty. Those are not platted lots, they are tax parcels registered with the county. They're not our lots or platted lots, they're tax parcels, okay?
Yes.
Just be clear about that.
That's a very good point, that's what I was, that's what I was.
You're, you're getting to that, okay, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Um, and so the, the acts that resulted in the three to the seven are included in your agenda packet under the timeline, in particular, the chain of title. And then as we get into the appendix, as we're going through that, you'll see the specific deeds that were recorded that result, went from the three to the seven, so that, all that information is in there, but I think for, for simplicity's sake, it's, it's very, it helps to look at the 1962 plat, plat versus the tax parcel map, which is a good point, Lamar, thank you, that we're looking at right here. Anthony, if there's something you ever want to jump in and, and, uh, mention, feel free. Okay, um, Patty, next slide, please? Okay. This is the survey that was submitted as part of the initial application. We've seen this, this board has seen this back in August. Um, and so I really don't need to go through this extensively. What I do want to point out is if you look at the northern property line on this, on this, on the northern parcel, my glasses on and get closer, you'll see it's a hundred and twenty-five feet. The other two, the other two dimensions I want to mention are the western property lines of both of these parcels, okay? They're seventy-six point oh one and seventy-six point oh one, when combined are one fifty-two point oh three. You recall that was the dimension of the original lot, one fifty-two point oh three. And the, the other item I want to point out is to the west of these two lots, you'll see a west twenty-five feet with kind of a, a, a north-south band if you will. Well, what happened, and it's, it's, it's documented in this chain of title, when a previous owner was reconfiguring this lot, twenty-five, the western twenty-five feet of the original lot was carved off and it was joined with some, with some of the properties, reconfigured with some of the other, the properties of the lots. That's why our lot today, or these two lots are a hundred and fifty, like twenty-five feet of the original plat was removed. And it was part of a reconfigured western parcel, or made to be part of that.
So that twenty-five feet was carved off the tax parcel, not yet a lot planted.
Yeah, um, no, no, I, I.
The western twenty-five feet was taken away from the platted Lot 21.
Yeah. Was Lot 21 registered and platted?
Lot 21 as in the 1962 plat is a platted lot. These two parcels that you see on the overhead are not platted lots.
Right.
They were reported via survey. Pardon?
Parcel one and parcel two depicted on the screen are tax parcels, as the chairman made that distinction between tax parcels and a platted lot. So, you know, there's, there's a couple of things going on here. The platted Lot 21 consists of the two tax parcels that Mr. DeChristopher owns and the western twenty-five feet, which is shown on, on this, uh, on this plan.
Patty, could you scroll forward one more?
If you add all that together, you get your original Lot 21.
And when the smoke clears away, however we decide this, we're going to have to flat Lot 21.
That's, that's, that's a, that'll be a topic of discussion.
That'll be a separate, uh, rodeo.
And now, here we, here we are, we just scrolled forward in, in the presentation. You can see that the, the subject parcels are, are Lot one and Lot two, the north and south lot, and they have an MCD depiction on them. Um, those are Mike and Colette DeChristopher, uh, who are the, Mr. DeChristopher who is here this evening is the applicant. And the yellow area is the twenty-five feet that Anthony and we've been discussing, that is the portion of the original lot that was carved off. Um, and those are owned by CHP, which means Charlie, Charles, and Helen in.
In there, presently owned by him.
Correct. All right. Um, Patty, could you scroll forward one more? I don't recall exactly what we have, maybe from here. Okay, uh, this is the email from Mr. Allen, uh, that, where he gave his opinion on the, uh, the initial um, application being consistent with the R1 zoning requirements. Um, one more, Patty? And I think, I think you may want to go back, yes, can we go back now, I'm sorry, I know you're, keep going, I want to get back to the, right there, okay. All right. Now, I'm going to jump back into the agenda cover, um, midway down page four. The code establishes the following criteria that must be considered as part of a lot split review. And there's, there's one, two, there's ten of them, and I'm just going to briefly mention them. Number one, the proposed lot split must be in every respect meet the criteria of the code. Now, with respect to lot width, lot depth, and lot area, um, staff is indicating that the proposed lots are consistent. However, um, I do want to point out that in evaluating, this is, I'm going to read a quote. In evaluating the proposed request, staff believes the proposed northern lot clearly meets the general minimum lot requirements. Lot width, lot depth, minimum area. However, staff has wrestled with the application of the general requirements to the proposed southern lot because the proposed southern lot has a corner radius along the intersection of East Central Boulevard and Ridgewood. The city code is silent on how to measure the lot width or depth on a corner lot radius. If you look at the definition, uh, we won't go into all of that, but if you look at the definition of lot width and lot depth, it's very simple to apply on a rectangular lot, it's easy. When you start, you can see in this aerial, you can see we have a radius there on the southeast corner of lots, um, of, of the southern lot, the corner lot. And it's, it's, uh, let's just say that the code is silent, how that is, is done. Anytime there's silence, there's room for interpretation. So, next paragraph. Notwithstanding, the proposed southern lot would appear to meet the minimum lot size of seventy-five hundred square feet and has a minimum lot width of seventy-five feet and a minimum lot depth of a hundred feet and oriented to Ridgewood Avenue. Because then the lot width would be seventy-six point oh one. Patty, could we, could we go back to the deed, please? Yeah, thank you. And, um, a lot depth of a hundred and sixteen point one nine. However, the proposed lot split would result in a corner lot inconsistent with Section 98107b3 of code, which requires that a corner lot have a width at least fifteen percent larger than the width of the interior lot along both adjacent streets. As the adjacent lot is a hundred feet, which is the lots, Patty? Let's see, which way do we need to go? Um, no, uh, let's go backwards, I'm sorry, let's go back. I'm going to shift, there, right there, right there, no, one more forward, yep, right there. The proposed corner lot, um, again, that, that lot immediately to the west, going west on East Central. That has a lot width of a hundred feet. Therefore, the proposed corner lot would be required to have a minimum width of a hundred and fifteen feet in more, in order to comply with, with the fifteen percent requirement. Number two, the application is consistent with the city comp plan. And our, our position is it is not consistent because the comp plan says that development needs to, needs to meet applicable dimensional criteria from the city central building, which it does not. Um, number four, each of the proposed lots would have proper access. Number five, the surrounding area is characterized by single-family and multifamily residential, uh, which is, which, these lots are consistent. The application does not create burdensome congestion, I don't feel that it does. The application promotes the orderly layout, I believe that it does. The application provides for adequate light and air. We, we, our position is that it does. The application does not create overcrowding, um, we do, the, the proposed lot split is consistent with that. And finally, the application does not pose any significant harm, um, to the provision of water, sewer, and other public services, we don't feel that it does. Um, so, it, let, let's, let's go through the, um, let's go through the attachments real quick before I read our recommendation. Um, pardon?
Call a timeout for a second? Um, I don't want the board to get confused because what you're looking at is the app, the initial application that was already reviewed by the board and recommended, you're not presenting a supplemental plan that was, that was submitted by the applicant, which is also in the agenda. I don't want the board to get confused about, I think you're laying out the analysis of the criteria, but not talking about the supplemental.
Well, um, I, I think that the, yeah, well, yes, I, I would say that the, um, numbers three through ten, I think are, um, um, are, are applicable to the supplemental lot split application. I'm, I'm sorry, go, go ahead, Anthony.
You have not depicted the supplemental plan, which the board needs to make a recommendation on, on the screen as of yet.
No, I have not, as of yet, I have not.
So I just want to make sure the board doesn't think what you're talking about is the supplemental application.
Understood.
Which we call the supplemental application.
Understood.
The supplemental plan.
We will, we will get to the supplemental plan as we're going to. So, yes. Let's, matter of fact, let's do that right now. Um, attach.
Are you going through the, the carve-out?
Yes.
Uh, diagram?
Yes.
We might as well just go to that and get down to the, to the crux of this thing.
Let's go to attachment five, the last page of attachment five. It's right before, uh, Kevin Markey's letter of November 29th. Is everybody, is everybody there?
I'm not sure I'm on the same page you're on, but I do have a copy of the carve-out. Is it, I don't see Kevin Markey's letter, letter. I've got Alan Engineering in front of me, but. Got this one? Yeah, I got it, but you're saying it's, okay, go on, let's talk about it. This, this is what he submitted as a.
Supplemental.
Attempt to adjust the lot width, accommodate a hundred and fifteen percent.
Yeah. In, in introducing the, of, the supplemental lot split survey, I want to read attachment six. This was the, I'll call it a, um, clarifying letter from Mr. Markey, who's the applicant's attorney. And it's dated November 29th, 2022. Dear Mr. Dickey, I write on behalf of the above referenced applicant, Mr. DeChristopher, and submit the following supplemental information for the lot split application. A copy of the alternative lot split plan, which we're going to go over, that addresses the requirements of Section 98107b3, which is a fifteen percent increase in corner lot width, as illustrated and measured by the surveyor on the plan that ex, that, which exceeds the minimum required lot dimension.
David?
Yes?
Can we have, uh, the, uh, put on the overhead?
Is that part of the, um?
Agenda.
Agenda. I'm not sure it's, whether you can. You fill the agenda. You fill the agenda packet up itself? Okay.
And what page do you want me to go to?
Um, we'll be back in the exhibits, I don't know if we have a page name on the exhibits, but if you scroll through it, I can, I need to come over there.
Looks like it might be page thirty-six or fifty-nine, maybe? If I'm thinking right.
Eighty-six? What is that? Okay, yeah.
Right?
Okay, well, isn't that what this is? Okay, so I think it's, it's over. Cause it's not up there.
It is.
Yeah. I've got it. It's not it? Mark Allen's. Okay.
It's not driving.
Nicknamed that chart. Part of that, it's only seven, as far as that.
Yeah, I think.
I think I had it, yes. Oh, yeah, there's the carve-out.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't find this one in the.
We are, we're pulling it up right now.
I got it. There it is. All right, that's what we're doing. We have nicknamed this chart, the carve-out chart, just so everybody knows.
Yeah, that's the carve-out.
All right, proceed, David.
Okay. So, let's go, let's, we're going through our attachments. Lamar, are you gonna, is it okay if I go through the attachments one by one, or do you wanna jump right into this?
Well, let me ask you this. Is it really necessary, your main, I mean, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna go through all that stuff for the record, it's indirect. We're gonna get down to the attempt to make a hundred and fifty, to adjust that lot for a lot split, and then we're gonna make a decision. All that history is not gonna, I don't think it's gonna add much.
Okay.
Go to, go to that chart and explain to the public how the applicant has carved out the southern, a portion of the northern lot and given it to the southern parcel. I'm not gonna call it a lot, it's not platted. Giving it to the southern parcel and the northern thereby, thereby reducing the width of the northern parcel. Let's look at that.
Yes, as you can see from the supplemental lot split sketch that we have pulled up now, the applicant has reconfigured the two parcels. And the reconfiguration is focused on the line that divided the two parcels north and south. What has been done is, the line has been, it's gone twenty-five feet back, and then it's taken a jog to the north, and then it's gone, obviously gone to the western property line. It's jogged back to the west. And this has been a, this is the technique, or the approach, if you will, that the applicant is suggesting makes these two parcels, in particular the southern parcel, consistent with the fifteen percent requirement of, of our subdivision regulation.
Now, what did they do to the northern parcel?
The northern parcel, you can see, hate to just jump back and forth, but it would really be nice to, to have, be able to compare.
I'll supply my answer. It reduced the width of the northern parcel.
Right.
Down to sixty-four feet.
Right. In the original application that the board, we looked back at in August, it was, the parcel was seventy-six feet in width.
Which is important, would have been a conforming size lot.
Yes.
Sixty-four feet is non-conforming. So, taking out the part of the northern parcel and giving it to the southern parcel to make the southern parcel wider to accommodate a hundred and fifteen percent.
And the.
It robbed the northern parcel of the width, necessary width, and made it non-conforming. It's no longer, if it became a lot, it wouldn't be buildable. Wouldn't be wider. It wouldn't be a conforming lot, let me say that.
Yeah, I mean, you have a, a finite amount of property, north, south, and east and west, and you can move the line however you'd like to, but it's going to be, you know, our position is that even the supplemental site plan sketch does not meet, and I wanna kind of refocus the conversation back there, it does not meet that subdivision requirement of the corner lot has to be fifteen feet wider than the adjacent interior lot. And again, the adjacent interior lot is a hundred feet in width. Therefore, our position is that this corner lot has to be a hundred and fifteen feet in width to meet that fifteen percent requirement. And as you can see from the sketch, the corner lot is not a hundred and fifteen in width. It is something less than that. And that position is, I'll say, buttressed by a, a statement from Mr. Allen that we received recently. It is an attachment, it's attachment eleven, and it's dated, it's from Mr. Allen, it's dated November thirtieth. Again, it's attachment eleven. And it says, "David, I have reviewed Mr. DeChristopher's revised lot split application. Based on my interpretation of the code, the lot split does not meet the minimum requirement of lot width for a corner lot in R-one zoning." And Mr. Allen references the sections of code that he is using in his, in his interpretation, his position. All right? And?
Let me review the bidding. The corner lot, a minimum lot width, that's seventy-five feet.
Seventy-five feet.
Seventy-five.
That's.
Has to be a hundred feet deep and seventy-five feet wide.
That's the zoning standard, yes.
Now, to make that corner lot a hundred and fifteen percent wider than, it has to be seventy-five feet plus fifteen percent. Or my fifty-five degree math makes that seventy-five times one point one five, eighty-six feet.
Lamar.
Behold, we see eighty-seven feet wide.
Yeah, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest another approach.
Well, let me finish, and I will go yours. So, now he's got eighty-seven feet, and he's, he's met the hundred and fifteen percent requirement for the seventy-five foot corner lot. It's now eighty-seven feet. However, the northern parcel has been reduced to the size of sixty-four point seven nine feet, a non-conforming lot. Okay, that, that's, those are just two facts. Everybody just needs a brand on the forehead.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Lamar. I think if we're applying these Chapter one-ten minimum zoning requirements, that, that is, that is accurate. However, when we bring in the Chapter ninety-eight requirement of a corner lot has to be fifteen percent larger than the adjacent interior lot, which is the lot to the west of it, which is a hundred feet in width. The code says that this corner lot has to be fifteen percent larger than that hundred foot wide adjacent lot, which means the corner lot has to be a minimum of a hundred and fifteen feet in width. That, that, this proposed lot.
Which one is the width? This is the width. Which orientation are you using for this?
Well, that's a good question.
Standing of the earth.
And, and, and.
The front of the lot, in, in normal parlance that we've used all these years, is the front of the lot is the narrowest part of the lot, the narrowest dimension. So, given this technique, the front of the lot is on Ridgewood.
Right, correct.
And the width is made north, south.
Correct.
It needs to be seventy-five feet plus one point one five. Or my other question is, the, how does the verdict rule? Does the lot have to be one hundred and fifteen percent larger? Not talking about any specific dimension?
The, the code says that a corner lot has to be fifteen percent larger in width.
In width.
Than the adjacent interior lot, which is the lot to the west. Okay? Patty, can we go to the, the aerial that, well, let's, I don't wanna lose this page because this is important.
You keep coming back to a hundred feet.
Yeah.
There ain't no hundred feet width in this.
Let's go back to the aerial, the one that show, yeah, no, let's, let's go back to the aerial that shows the seven lots. Up right there, right back, right there. Okay. Here's what we have today. The lot, we can see the corner lot is the subject lot that we're talking about. Immediately to the west or to the left of that, that lot that fronts east central, that lot is a hundred feet in width. The tax parcel.
It's a hundred and feet in width, okay, with that orientation because it fronts on central.
Right. So, according, according to the Chapter, Chapter ninety-eight, our subdivision regulations, there's design section in there. And that design section says that corner lots have to be a hundred and fifteen, or fifteen percent larger in width than the adjacent interior.
But in this case, the width has rotated ninety degrees from the width applicable to the.
Correct.
To the other lot.
The width, the, the lot to the west runs north, south.
Yep, that's the width.
The corner lot, in this case, is running east, west.
Uh, no, the corner lot runs east, west, but the width of it is north, south.
Correct, yes, we agree on that, yes. And as proposed, on the, on the revised sketch, I think it's showing, let me say it's eighty, I don't have it in front of me. Patty, can we go back to the, the drawing? The supplemental drawing?
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven, is that what it is, eighty-seven? Okay. Yeah. So, our position is that, that eighty, that eighty-seven foot dimension would have to be at least a hundred and fifteen, be consistent with that fifteen percent requirement.
Is, is that assuming then that the front of that lot is on central?
No.
It's on Ridgewood.
It's on Ridgewood.
So, you're showing the frontage on Ridgewood of being a twenty-four feet cent? Yes, no?
At, at, the, the, what they're showing is, by this, by this, this arrow about halfway through the lot, showing it at eighty, eighty-eight point eight-five?
Oh, I see where you're talking about now. I see, yeah.
Lot width, and it says lot width right next to it.
Eighty-eight point eight-five.
Yeah, yeah. What we're saying is that should be a hundred and fifteen to be consistent with the subdivision requirement of fifteen percent larger.
Why do you say a hundred and fifteen?
Because the lot to the west of this, again, the code says a corner lot has to be fifteen percent wider than the adjacent interior lot, which is the lot to the west of this lot.
Okay, it's on the orientation you're looking at. That, that lot that you're, the adjacent lot to the corner lot parcel, it is now, it started out to be eighty-seven feet wide, no, it didn't. It started out to be seventy-nine, seventy-six, what, seventy-six point.
Oh-one.
Oh-one feet wide. That's the width of that lot. The width of the other one is ninety degrees. Throw that away, we're just talking about this lot now. We don't have to relate it to the second lot.
Well, that's, that's not how I read it, but the board is certainly free to.
Look, doesn't matter, he's carved out, carved out of the nor, the northern parcel, the additional distance to make that southern parcel big enough to meet the hundred and fifteen requirement. But you look at what's left, the northern parcel only has a sixty-four feet width.
And that's inconsistent with the minimum.
Why, why would we do that? So, okay, your, your, your decision is made for you. We don't, we don't create non-conforming lots. We try to provide solutions with overlays, we came along with an overlay and rezone some of the non-conforming lots to help out the mortgage problem that we were hearing in our past activities. But that's in the past. We're not gonna create a new non-conforming lot just to create a hundred and fifteen percent parcel on the south side on a corner lot. That's not the way we do business. And that's, you weren't going there, I know you weren't. You were trying to weed us through all this, but to me, it gets down to, this ain't gonna work.
It doesn't work either. I, I understand where you're coming from, Lamar. Exactly.
Yeah, we, we don't need to strain it a nap. We need to just come down to a decision. How, how do we feel that this request be granted based on the analysis we've just gone through? You can't carve out land to make the southern parcel large enough at the expense of the northern parcel. It doesn't work. Therefore, you still got one buildable, buildable lot.
Can I make a suggestion? Could we have either Mr. DeChristopher or his representative explain to us how they think that this fits?
Did you fill out a card? As everybody fills out a card, it's gonna follow.
You can do it.
You can fill one out later.
That's fine.
I knew you were sitting there waiting to. My name is Michael DeChristopher. I live in seventeen sixty-five, Los Angeles, California, in Murray Island. I'm the applicant, and all of the voting goes to him. I first wanted to address Kevin Ross's comment. This is just an alternate layout. Many lots in big, can have a deep, uh, subdivision that don't meet the seventy-five feet in width. That's a fact.
And that's because we came back and, and rezoned them and to accommodate them and make them conforming, although not. We made them conforming by legalese so they could get mortgages.
Yeah, we rezoned something different than our one.
No, we, we rezoned them such that those lots are conforming. I don't know how else to say it. We came back and made them conform by, by rid of pencil.
Okay, so the supplemental drawing that I have, it's not meant to make me have just one lot. It was just an, an alternate layout that I wanted to present to the council that if they were gonna make me conform to a section of the code that doesn't comply to lot splits, then this would how it would look. So, let me just read what I just passed out to you, because basically it's what should help summarize and explain everything. Before you today is a lot split application that you previously voted unanimously in favor of. Based on staff recommendations and on examination of meeting the minimum requirements on Chapter ninety-eight, Article two, Division five, Section ninety-eight thousand six hundred and sixty-four of the city code. Chapter ninety-eight is the code for subdivision.
What page, what page are you on?
I'm on the very first page of my presentation. should help summarize and explain everything. Before you today is a lot split application that you previously voted unanimously in favor of. Based on staff recommendation and on examination of meeting the minimum requirements on chapter ninety-eight, Article Two, Division Five, Section ninety-eight dash six and six and four of the city code. Chapter ninety-eight is the code for subdivision.
What page, what page are you on?
I'm on the very first page of my application. I'm just reading right off of that.
Okay.
So there are four, um, there are four different articles pertaining to this chapter, and they're numbered one through four, in different sections numbered one through one hundred and nineteen. Article one is, is in general, has sections one through thirty and talks about definition and the power of defining a zone. Article two addresses what I'm trying to do here, is flats and lot splits. It's comprised of sections thirty-one to sixty-seven with six different divisions. My lot split application falls under Division Five. Article three is subdivision construction. It's comprised of section sixty-eight to eighty-five, with three divisions covering submitting and permitting of subdivision forms and their construction. And finally, Article four improvements. That covers sections eighty-six through and which is part of what Mr. Dickey was talking about here. Division one covers the infrastructure development. And Division two, the design standards of streets, lots, blocks, and easements for new construction. The reason why staff's initial recommendation was for approval is because there is no mention on Article two lot splits, Section ninety-eight, six and six and four, that refers, the applicant or staff can proceed to Article four, Division two, subdivision design standard. I'm not designing a subdivision, which is why there is no mention of this standard in Article two lot splits, Section ninety-eight dash six and six. I mean, if there was if Article four was supposed to be part of Article two, why isn't it a reference in the, for staff and the applicant to understand that the two different, the two different codes, that one's for building and constructing, constructing a subdivision, the other is splitting a lot? Anyways, by applying, by applying a design standard to exist, an existing sixty-year-old subdivision that the city has allowed thirty or more illegal lots without replating, and this is on Mr. Dickey's attached five, presents an undue hardship not caused by me. Now, all those, um, lots, all those dirty homes that are on tax parcels are not on added lots. They were never platted, so they illegally subdivided, and I'll get to that in a moment. So let's look into the past and follow its transpired. In staff's summary, Mr. Dickey points out that [inaudible] Beach Gardens Unit Two was planted in nineteen sixty-two. In nineteen seventy-nine, the city downzoned the subdivision from R two multifamily to R one single family against the objections of multiple owners. That's in staff's [inaudible]. One of those property owners was Mr. Pintiak. Mr. Pintiak threatened to sue the city for the loss of value of his property if the rezoning was approved. The council asked the city attorney if what they were doing was legal, and would they be successful with talent in court? And the answer at that time was fifty-fifty by the city attorney. The council passed the rezoning to R one single family, and Mr. Pintiak and others were left to file suit or find their own alternative way to gain back some of their lost value. And that's exactly what they did. All the property owners, including Mr. Pintiak, stood up their lots, subdivided them in the early ages without replating as required by city code. The only difference was, Mr. Pintiak and all the other thirty homeowners was that there was no home, no homes built on Mr. Pintiak's property. And now the city wants to impose rules on me that weren't applied back when the other property owners split their lots up. You'd see the building permits and built their homes on illegally subdivided lot. Four of those lots were corner lots, like mine. And I have attached their legal descriptions in your package, which are one fifty-one East Central Boulevard. It's seventy-nine feet wide and also does not meet the hundred and fifteen percent greater in width than the adjacent lot. This home faces East Central Boulevard and does not have the proper minimums actually applied by chapter ninety-eight and one ten. Two oh four Circle Drive is also seventy-five feet wide and does not meet the fifteen percent increase in lot width of adjacent lots. Eighty-five ninety-two Roslyn Avenue is only seventy-five feet wide on one side and is not fifteen percent greater in lot width than the adjacent lots on the other side. These are the corner lots in [inaudible]. And then three oh one Surf Drive, which ironically was owned by Mr. Campbell Stavert, is only seventy-five feet wide and is not fifteen percent greater in lot width than the adjacent lots on both sides. In fact, this home faces [inaudible] Boulevard and does not have the minimum set applied by chapter ninety-eight and one ten. So what is this meeting about? It's about the city applying a portion of subdivision code, chapter ninety-eight, one oh seventy-three, that pertains to subdivision construction, design standards, and improvements for permitting and development. And using it to usurp Article two of the same code for lot splits, particularly my corner lot, which the city has recognized for decades on their official zoning map, which is in your package. That same zoning map recognizes all the illegal lot splits that occurred around the same time as mine, shortly after the rezoning took place. With that said, staff has recommended to council and community to choose to [inaudible]. Option one would be to deny the lot split application, but when applying Article four, subdivision construction to Article two lot splits, I can no longer meet the criteria for chapter ninety-eight dash six and six four B. Option two would be to deny my request for a lot split or two buildable homesite, but approve my western bounty line that was split out by Mr. Pintiak by deed, two and south, for a twenty-five foot strip of land to later be used as an access to, uh, as an access to an additional lot split. Again, after the rezoning took place in the early ages. Vertical line, but it is my west bounty line, but it would not recognize a horizontal line split that is recognized on the official zoning map and my legal description. To approve this option gives the city authority to use my lot split application to split out and recognize a twenty-five foot access strip of land behind me that I do not own. Because this option suggests the city, and they can choose which line sees fit to recognize on my lot, places an additional hardship on me by not recognizing all the bounty lines that are shown on my lot split application. In addition, this twenty-five foot strip of land legally separates my lot as the interior adjacent lot on East Central Boulevard and should not be used to define lot width at an additional fifteen percent. Option three would be to recognize a twenty-five foot access strip and grant me two buildable homesite as originally submitted. However, staff again has applied Article four subdivision construction improvements to Article two lot split. Therefore, I no longer meet the criteria of chapter ninety-eight, nine, six and six four B, and that I should seek to balance the lot with. Keep in mind that staff approved the initial lot split because it met all the criteria of ninety-eight, six and six. On page four, Mr. Dickey's summary, he states in paragraph one that the general minimum lot requirements are fully met. It goes on to say that the city is silent on how to measure lot width or depth on corner lot rates. My survey used a current formula as per chapter ninety-eight point one to show the lot reconfiguration that I submitted as a supplemental layout, which meets the fifteen percent increase of my lot to the north. Mr. Dickey pointed out that if the corner lot were to face Ridgewood, then it would meet the required lot depth and width. At that point, the adjacent lot would again be my own lot to the north, also facing the Ridgewood Avenue. But Mr. Dickey goes on to say that the twenty-five foot strip of land in my backyard on Section Boulevard constitutes a larger lot when combined with Mr. Pintiak's other property to the west. I would argue that the twenty-five foot strip prevents me from touching an adjacent lot on East Central Boulevard and therefore should not be held to meet fifteen percent of a lot that doesn't exist adjacent to me on Central Boulevard. Because city staff is requiring me to meet Article four subdivision construction, design standards, and improvements instead of Article two lot split, it has forced me to reconfigure my lot split layout, which I shouldn't have to do. I'm having to submit an alternate lot layout. The city staff has represented, represented to the board members convoluted discussion involving the development of a subdivision instead of a simple lot split application. Once again, there are four corner lots that legal descriptions that are equally like mine, and the city granted building permits for those property owners. I ask this board, since nothing has changed in sixty years except for the rezon, why is the city placing this hardship on me to not recognize my existing lots and requiring that the corner lot be fifteen percent wider than a, than a nonexistent adjacent lot in my backyard that has a twenty-five foot strip of land between me and it? I ask the board to send a message to council and staff and say that chapter ninety-eight, Article four, section one oh seven B three, subdivision construction, development, and design standard does not apply or is even referenced in Article two lot split. And approve option three for two buildable lots without the need for a variance for lot width since Article four does not apply to Article two. Hey, do you have any questions? I know this stuff
Oh, I do have a question. Okay. As we're looking at this modified lot split.
Right.
Can you explain to me, using this graph, how both those lots, the proposed lot split, are compliant with current code?
Which, which code? Chapter one ten or chapter ninety-eight? Chapter ninety-eight, the chapter that he's using for subdivisions, the new subdivision, requires a fifteen percent increase in the lot width. And this, and this, Dickey is telling me that I have to face my house on Ridgewood with two of those houses actually covered.
But, but the way that I see this is if that's done, then the lot
That's correct.
To, wait, let me, let me finish. The lot to the north then does not comply. So we're still running into the same situation of a lot split.
I don't want this configuration. But this is
Okay.
This is an alternate, this is an alternate configuration that my survey is due based on the requirements of a subdivision code for construction and development, not for lot split. So the reason why it was designed like this because in, in the, because this fifteen percent increase of the lot adjacent to it. Remember, put it up on the screen there for Mr. Dickey. Can you go back to where it shows, uh, the original lot application, the one after that? And can you get the one after that as yellow? See that yellow there?
Yeah.
That's a separate deed. That will never, ever be a lot, ever.
But, but that, that's not what I'm saying.
But I'm just trying to question why the code that he's holding that's making my initial application insufficient for lot width says that I have to be a hundred, I'm fifteen percent greater than the adjacent lot.
I'm not talking about that. I'm not talking about that. So you show on your northern lot a lot width of sixty-four point seven-six feet.
As measured of the code [inaudible].
And as I recollect, that's not compliant. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So are you telling me you're showing us something that you don't want to use? And you're using these numbers to convince us?
I'm not trying to convince you to do that supplemental plan. Well, that supplemental plan is an ultimate lot layout as, as, uh, for some, for that chapter. That chapter doesn't even apply Article four to my supplemental lot. Now, with that said, there are lots, many lots in there that are less than seventy-five feet wide. Why would they approve? I mean, there is seventy-five feet of height.
So I have a comment. First off, there are sins in the past that this board is not a part of.
Oh, president.
But, you know, I believe on, here's the rules of the day, right? You knew this was zoned R one back in, what was it, nineteen seventy?
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine. Um, your original lot split proposal, you wanted a variance to the twenty-five foot rule on that corner. And we said that that would have to be a separate application for that variance
Which I agree with you.
That, that we would have to do. Now, I'm inclined not to approve that variance. Um, when you do come ahead of that, right? So and, and I'm certainly not going to approve the supplemental one because it definitely does not
That's fine.
Right? So
I expect you not to approve it.
I mean, honestly, I think the option two that the city council has recommended, where you have a one, build one lot to build one home on it, meets all the criteria. And then you will have it in the records that you can actually develop it. And that twenty-five feet of yellow land that you got there is taken care of, and then you can move forward and build one house on one lot.
The yellow land is not on that.
I know. I know, but I wa, I was at the city council meeting when this was presented before. And what I understood is in order for you to, to, to build a house, at least one house on your land that doesn't include the yellow, you needed city council approval to recognize the what is, the, what is it? The, the tax, uh, parcels so you can build. So you needed an action from planning and zoning or the city council to acknowledge your tax parcels. Right? Yes.
Initial submit.
Yes. Which hasn't been approved yet, so I mean, you still need to have some sort of, um, acknowledgement from the city.
I've mentioned a lot of questions. One of them is how can the city council use my lot split application decide some kind of separation between me and another lot, or that has nothing to do with my application? I have nothing to do with Mr. Pintiak.
I, I understand that.
So if you want to recognize a vertical line that's on a tax parcel, why not recognize the horizontal line that the official zoning map recognizes in a legal description? How can you just confuse this line beyond the recognition? I'm just asking a question.
No, I, I don't think
That's the answer that I'm trying to find out. Why is staff saying that a subdivision, instruction, development, improvement, standard applies to Article two? And Article four? If I want to come in here as a developer, and I am a developer, if I want to come here as a developer and develop a subdivision, I have to conform to Article four? If I come in here for a lot split, I have to conform to Article two? There's no reference to Article two that Article four applies to? That's why staff messed up in the beginning, was because it never was a reference. There was never a reference to Article four that had to be applied to Article two. It's just a simple lot split, it's not a subdivision. Subdivision is designed by a policy that's been split really, really well across it. That's what it didn't have. And it's no different from what other people did back in nineteen, in the early eighties. They took fifteen lots and made thirty lots. But what happens if someone's house burns down? How do you, how do they go back and turn it to rebuild it if they have, they're on a tax parcel and not on a platted lot? They would never platted. I need answers to those questions. My attorney's going to be answering those questions. The court is going to want answers to those questions. How does that happen? All I'm saying is that this, all this stuff that's gone on sixty years has put a hardship on me at the last minute because staff says, oh, subdivision code for development and improvement's now applies to you. I don't care about anybody else. It's okay to them, but it's not okay to you. It's one of the lots here, just like mine, that you approved for building sense. Now, I can't have a building sense? Have to do. I don't even want to say.
Yeah. Uh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, I want to just address a couple of points too, uh, that Mr. DeChristopher made. I think I understand what Mr. DeChristopher is, something to argue regarding the different articles in chapter ninety-eight. Ninety-eight doesn't need to consist of four separate articles, but, um, regardless, when you look at Division Five lot splits, the first criteria specifically states, um, if I can pull it up here, that the proposed lot split shall in every respect meet the criteria established elsewhere in this chapter. Chapter, and it's referring to a chapter, it's referring to chapter ninety-eight, which does consist And it's referring to a chapter, it's referring to chapter ninety-eight, which does consist of four articles, but the lot split division actually requires lot splits to apply, comply with the provisions of the chapter, chapter ninety-eight. So the section that staff has brought brought to your attention, you know, while it may be in a different article, it's still part of chapter ninety-eight. And lot split division requires lot splits to comply with the chapter. So that's point number one I want to make, because I'll make the same comment to the council, Mr. DeChristopher, as well. The other statement that's in his handout, and I'm perplexed by that, and the statement is that the twenty-five feet that's depicted in yellow on your screen is actually in, I think he refers to it as an access strip of land. That is not correct. That twenty-five feet is actually incorporated into portions of lot twenty when Mr. Penziak created his tax parcels consisting of a portion of lot twenty and the west twenty-five feet of lot twenty-one. So there's nothing that I recall in the record saying that that twenty-five feet is an access strip. That that unless you have something, I I just don't know, think that's factual, Dave. I don't remember seeing anything indicating that the twenty-five foot's an access strip, so I don't want the board to be confused about that point.
Okay, we hear what you said. We'll have to stir that in with all the rest of it. Right now, the, the, Mr. DeChristophers, he has, does he have a, he doesn't have a lot. He has ownership of a tax parcel. Tax parcel number twenty, twenty-one. And then he proposes to turn it into twenty-one point oh one and twenty-one point oh two. But right now, it's it's twenty-one. Is that correct?
No, it's actually, the tax parcel IDs are actually reflected up on the screen there.
Mm-hmm.
I think the tax parcel is twenty-four, thirty-seven, fourteen, fifty-one, nine, twenty-one point zero one. And the parcel number two to the south is the same, but twenty-one point zero two.
Yeah.
What Mr. DeChristopher has is two tax parcels.
They're not platted lots.
But they're not platted lots, as you indicated.
So I'm trying to figure out what comes first, the chicken or the egg? And if if he wanted to, he could back up and start at the beginning and come in and say, I've got two lots. And I want to, I got one lot and I want to split it. He's already split it. You you see it here. He's, it's already split as a tax parcel, but we don't show it as a split lot on our plat. Is that it? Is that it?
Correct. The city did not approve the tax parcels as separate developmental lots.
So he wants the city, just backing up to the beginning, he's asking the city to separate that parcel into two tax parcels and plaid it as two lots. We don't have, we don't have an application for a lot plating. Don't we have to plaid that first before we can split it and and process variances? We don't process variances on tax parcels.
He's seeking, he's seeking a lot split based on his ownership of two tax parcels. On evaluation of this by staff, it is clear that the original lot twenty-one, which was platted and approved by the city.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, was illegally subdivided. So, you know, throwing it all into the the wash machine, a lot split, in my view, would be appropriate to either recognize this tax parcels as two developmental lots or alternatively recognize what he has as one developmental lot, understanding basically after the fact recognizing that lot twenty-one was illegally subdivided.
I'm asking for that.
You're not asking for what?
I'm asking for that.
Well, I think the record's clear that you're not asking for one. You're asking for recognition of of two based on your tax parcel legal descriptions.
Okay.
Right? Yeah. I think we understand that.
Well, it looks to me like he need, he, let's see. I'll ask it instead of stating it. Does he have a platted lot?
He has a portion of a platted lot.
And what is it? What am I looking at here? Which, what, is that a platted lot, that entirety, that that mass?
Yeah, unfortunately, we don't have a pointer, but if you look at all of the yellow.
Yeah.
And all of the land to the east.
Mm-hmm.
Parcels one and two combined, that's your original lot twenty-one that was approved by the city council in, I think, nineteen sixty-two.
So doesn't he need to start all over and come back again and ask for a plat of the parcel east of the yellow strip?
The code.
He needs to get it planted first.
Well, the code, the lot split process is an alternative to the plating process. Okay? So if you're just dividing a parent, I'll call it a parent tract, let's say lot twenty-one is a parent tract. You're dividing that into two, the code allows you to do that as an alternative to plating, but you have to go through the city's lot split process.
Oh, you can lots, you can split the tax parcel before you plaid it? I suppose so.
No, no, you.
Only if you're doing it once and you're two lot. Only two, it has to be planted. Recognition of a subdivision by the.
Say something was left out here and I'm trying to get my head around it. We've got a tax parcel. Call it tax parcel, well, it's parcel one and parcel two. But what do we have? Is this our city plat here? This?
No.
Okay.
Our city plat is what we showed you on that, on the.
First first chart?
It's the, the original plat, the.
Could you go back to that one and put it up?
Right. The plat that was approved in nineteen sixty-two technically is still.
That's what we got.
That's what we, that's what we legally have.
That's what we're struggling with is what to do with it. And he's trying to.
A subsequent owner came along, it appears like in the nineteen eighties, and from those original three parcels, could we find that, that one, Patty, the one that shows the original plat? Yeah, keep going.
That's it.
Yeah, that one right there.
That's it, right there. Let's talk about, so twenty-one. That is a existing plat.
On the books, that's what the city.
Sure, okay. That's an, that's an existing plat. That's, that's what we, that's what we now have in before us, right? And we're struggling with changes to it. Okay? So what part of that does he own?
He owns, if you look at the lot twenty-one.
Mm-hmm.
See the hundred and fifty on the north property line?
Yeah.
Take twenty, the western twenty-five feet of that lot twenty-one out of the original lot, so it's now a hundred and twenty-five feet.
But it's not planted.
Correct.
He needs to go get that planted.
You asked what he owns.
He needs to go get it planted, then we can do legal things with it. Go get it planted, you got a platted lot we can talk about. Then he wants to split it, fine, we'll apply the split, split legislation or regulations to a platted lot. We're not there yet. He needs to get this thing planted, get his ownership of his lot planted. Am I right or wrong? If you, once you get it planted, you can proceed with a split. You're talking about a platted lot and then you've got all the regulations you can apply to it. But right now, we're trying to apply regulations to an imaginary lot that we don't have planted.
I don't think I would call it imaginary. What you see up on the screen were platted lots. I mean, they are platted lots.
But that's true, but his.
That's not what he owns.
But his.
Correct. We're trying to put Humpty Dumpty back together.
They're not the same, okay?
No, they're not the same as the original platted lot because it's illegally subdivided in nineteen eighty-two.
Okay, said it the other way again. Do our lot split regulations apply to tax parcel? They can't. We have to have something flatted. We have to have a legal plat of our city before we can divide it or combine it or do anything with it.
Right. Well, Lamar, we have to, legally, the city's process is you either plat if you have three or more lots. The city also allows an alternative approach, which is a lot split. If you're dividing into two, two parcels or or less, two parcels, you can, you don't have to go through the plat process, you can go through the lot split process. Two separate processes for different circumstances. Three or more plat, two lot split.
Okay, I get that. But now, you want to build something on it after it's split, it's parcel.
Mm-hmm. Which would be fine.
One of them doesn't work.
Well, if he went through the lot split process, we would catch all of these issues when we're doing our staff review. So if he was wanting to create a illegal, non-conforming lot in a lot split process, we would deny the lot split. It wouldn't be approved. So, but the issue here is that Mr. Penziak, without city approval, without city knowledge, carved these lots up with the property praiser's office by going down and recording a deed or deeds. And now we're here left with the, excuse me, wreckage of trying to put all this back together again and fix this situation. And that's why we've referred to this as after the fact lots. We're trying to, we're trying to put Humpty Dumpty back together again. And the issue is we'll never put lot twenty-one back together again as it legally exists because Mr. DeChristopher doesn't own the entire lot twenty-one.
It's that parcel he owns and to get it in, to do anything in the city, you're going to have to plaid it.
He's either going to have to plaid it or he's going to have, well, he's going to have to, he's going to have to follow one of the city processes, either plating it or lot split. And he's going.
He's got to plaid it after the lot split. If he's going to get permits to build structures.
Well.
You don't build structures on tax parcels around.
Correct. No, correct. That is correct. Agreed.
So, so what I can get my head around is a tax, a flatted lot. And then we'll talk about variances and precedent and hardship. We're not there yet.
But he has a flatted lot. He has a portion of a flatted lot. If he came in today, let me posit this question, if he came in today and said, I wanted to build, I want to build one home on these two tax parcels, would he be able to do that?
Okay, I guess my also topic of head answer is yes, he could. But if he has tax parcel, would he afford to build a lot if he plaid it?
Like the portion of a flat, a lot that has not been legally recognized by the city. So I'm positing your question, how would you recognize that he can develop and build one home on the two tax parcels that he owns today? No. My answer is no. Could not do that because the, the, the parcel, the two tax parcels were not created consistent with our code. If he, if he owned the other twenty-five feet and he owned the entire, if parcel twenty-one were still.
That's a point.
You're right. That's the point. How does the city recognize, fairness to Mr. DeChristopher, the dirty deed that was done in nineteen eighty-four, so he has these development rights to build one home on two tax parcels that were illegally created by Mr. Penziak in nineteen eighty-four?
Well, one could, I'll just throw this out, we did it against the wall. One could ask him to go through, get his lots planted, them split, and plow for variance in the city, and then we, and he has a hardship. I hope they don't accept it to court because I said it here in open session, it looks like if he had a platted lot. Because it was a deed that happened a long time before he bought it, and it's happened all over town. It's not the same configuration. Okay, all that aside, what do we as a city do to help us down with this?
Staff presented three options to the council at their October meeting, and we've discussed those tonight. First was just to deny the application. That's not particularly helpful. Option two was via an order that Anthony was asked to prepare, recognize those two tax ID parcels as one development parcel so Mr. DeChristopher could build one home. And then option three, you remember what option three was, Anthony, off the top of your head? Let me, let me read it. Option three. Option three was to approve the application, which would allow Mr. DeChristopher to build two, a single-family home on each of his tax parcel IDs. However, as a condition of approval, as a condition of option three, a variance would be required because the lots didn't meet the reduced size, the corner lot requirements that are in section ninety-eight one oh seven. Those were the three options that staff laid out to the council. The council in October chose option two. Deny the lot split application and approve one development parcel. And that would, that would as, as, as much as we can, that would kind of fix the situation as best the council could do. That would, that would maintain Mr. DeChristopher's right to build on the property.
He gets one lot.
He has one lot. And they would be, I'll just say, recognizing that illegal lot split that happened back in eighty-four. And they would say, okay, we recognize that. Our fix is to give Mr. DeChristopher one, one development lot.
Well, he already has that.
No, he does not.
He's got one tax parcel.
He has two tax, he has two tax parcels.
He can make that, he can make that into one lot.
Yes, that is option two. But, but standing here today, Mr. DeChristopher can't do anything because those lots were illegally divided. It's only through an action of the city council where they're going to recognize what was done in the past and, and, and give Mr. DeChristopher the ability to build a single, to build a home.
Article two is where the city council is at.
Yes.
In this.
Yes. That's, that's where they're at as of the October council meeting. Things may have changed before we, when we go back on December twentieth. And then after that hearing, Mr. DeChristopher submitted his supplemental plan to be put on the record. And that supplemental plan is being brought to you tonight to determine whether or not that supplemental plan complies with the city code. And so you can provide a recommendation to council before they actually vote on the complete application that was submitted by Mr. DeChristopher. So. So, you know, that's, that's the recommendation that the city staff is looking for. And Mr. DeChristopher has already stated on the record that he doesn't think it complies with the code. So I don't know how much more discussion needs to be had on the supplemental plan. Yeah, well, in essence, you do have to plead this case to the council, in case the application's still open and pending. This is, in essence, a continuation of this whole application process that started months ago when it was presented to you for a recommendation. And, you know, council's on the, on the eve of making a final decision on this app.
Can I say something? That's, that's drawing that you're looking at, is not the application. Option one, two, and three came back to the council and only submitted that alternate plan to show how it would work with a subdivision, uh, construction, development, uh, code. It doesn't work. It's only, it's only one lot. It's back to option two. So, you can throw that out the window. It's just an, uh, an alternate plan. It's not the one I've been looking for here tonight. It's either option one or two. Am I wrong, Mr. Gargan?
I, I mean, Mr. DeChristopher, I wish that was clear when you submitted it because the staff has taken this in as a supplemental plan proposal and is, and is putting it through the process to get a recommendation from the board. Had you explicitly stated that you're not asking for that to be approved, then we wouldn't be here tonight having this hearing. We would just resume at the council level. So you would-
For option one, two, and three.
Right, are you withdrawing this supplemental plan as a proposed option? For the, for, for the board and the council to consider for approving?
Oh.
So now, is the, did the council request the planning and zoning board to give a recommendation on one, two, or three?
No, no.
Okay.
It's just, it's just a lot.
Okay. Okay.
I think tonight, we need to process a motion that denies the first, and it just goes away.
Don't forget about public input. Well, we still have public input. I know that somebody here that wants to get something. I wouldn't have public, I wouldn't entertain public input, of course. Yeah, I think what chairman's asking is, I, I think I heard the applicant say, "I'd like to withdraw my application."
Yeah, so if you withdraw this application-
Do you need to take an official-
Do I need public input?
Well, I think so, I think so. But I think it, after the public input, I don't think, Anthony, help me out here. I don't think the council, or the, excuse me, the board is gonna be required to, if there's no application, there's no recommendation.
If that's the application, that's the supplemental design. I understand. So, is there anyone in the public who would like to come forward and give a biopic? Sir, come forward, state your name, and we'd be glad to listen. Would you provide a phone?
Yep.
Yeah, Pat Campbell, is that the Pat?
I'm here, Campbell, three oh seven, SoC Drive, Hickman. I wouldn't necessarily have come up now, this piece of this problem is gonna be pulled. However, I can feel compelled now because my name was mentioned as having a non-conforming lot, or a lot that's less than seventy-five feet. I just wanted to be on the record that all of the property my family owns is conforming and platted. So, um, with that, if we're gonna pull this, I don't have, I don't know about this, but I do wanna make a statement that, that the problem that, that, that I think this board and the council are having is that the ordinances, the plain language of our ordinances, the controlling case law, prevent this. And everything that's being done to try and make this work, splitting this, and talking about hardship, and talking about variance, a lot measurements, no, that can't happen. Everything is set up and not let that happen. So as this moves forward, there'll be more that comes out about, about the case law that applies exactly to what's being done here and shows that this is not what should be done. I have never objected to that being one property with one home, never. That, that's exactly the way I think it was platted originally. Yes, Mr. Penziac went off and did some things that are clearly defined in our ordinances. It shouldn't be done, but our ordinance also account for it by saying, "If that happens, you have to correct it in accordance with the ordinance." So as we move forward, um, and if the city council, I'm sure there'll be a lot more discussion about this. And, um, I appreciate everything that you all are doing to try and get to the bottom of it. But my property is conforming and, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. And, uh, you know, the reason we've spent this time on this is, one, it was put before us, and it's our duty to do it. But secondly, yeah, I'm a, I'm a prisoner of my NASA training. If you don't have the solution, you keep working it. You keep working. You keep looking, investigating, calculating, designing, whatever you have to do. And if you can't get there, you stop. And that's what we've been doing. We haven't been trying to circumvent our ordinance. We've been trying to explore all the avenues, make sure we didn't miss anything. And I guess we didn't. So, okay. Thank you for your input, appreciate that. Your teaching has been valuable to the staff.
If I, if, Mr. Chairman, if I could, if, 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 uh, Campbell mentioned something about case law, I would appreciate a courtesy copy of that, if you wouldn't mind. Please, before, before the council meeting?
Okay, is there anything else that you need to talk about?
Well, since we've gotten this far, now we're in forty minutes into the hearing. And maybe just a recognition by the board that the applicant has withdrawn the supplemental plan for consideration.
Do, well, we can do that. Do you need to do it in, in the form of a motion? What's, what's in my head, and you'll fix it for me? Is, is, uh, we can process a motion that denies the application, and everything just goes away. Or we can process a motion that says, "We recognize the applicant, application has been withdrawn." Should we do?
Yeah, recognize that the application has been, been withdrawn, and no recommendation needed.
Okay, very good. Then, uh, let me have a motion to that effect, recognizing that the motion's been withdrawn, and no, no, no further action is needed. Mr. Chairman, I make that motion. I will second that motion, Mr. Chairman. All will roll.
Mr. Russell?
For.
Mr. Price?
For the motion.
Ms. Denny?
For the motion.
Mr. Stroud?
For the motion.
And Mr. Thorpe?
For the motion.
Okay, that concludes that, uh, agenda item. Our next agenda item is an ordinance regarding building and building administration recog- regulations providing for the adoption of chapter eighty-two, article seven. Construction site management provided for the field and all that. So I'll stop there, we, we rest of it. Um, turn it over to the staff, lead us through it, Dave.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm gonna go less on script on this one than I would be first of all. You know, our, our day-to-day operations out in the field, primarily our building department and code enforcement folks, we, we run across situations that need to be fixed. And we've had two situations in the last six months that have brought to light several things that we just don't address in our code, or we don't adequately address in our code. And, um, I had a conversation with Anthony about these issues, and, uh, he indicated he could provide us with some proposed fixes. And they are here in front of you in the form of this construction management ordinance. And I won't go into the details of, of the specific issues that we've run into. But I, I, I will say that, um, um, you know, when you, when we, we have, we live in a small, dense city. And we have a lot of property owners who are on constrained sites. And we have issues with, as we all know, we have issues with parking. Um, we experience a lot of redevelopment in the city. And a lot of these result in conflicts between property owners. And, um, um, it is a, it's an area that we're going to continue to face. And we, we need to put some regulations on the book so that we have something to enforce. Because right now, it's no fun to go out and try to address a squabble between property owners when you really don't have anything in the playbook. Um, and cert- it's gray is not a good thing in, in many situations. So what, what we've got in front of us is what we've labeled the construction management ordinance, specifically to deal with sites that are under construction. And as you can see from the ordinance, there's, uh, I've listed six things and for, on the agenda cover that the ordinance addresses. And the, and the first is a construction management plan. And, and I wanna point out, the important thing is, I'm gonna read the first line. "The building official may require a plan." "The building official has ultimate discretion when it comes to implementing this ordinance." There are gonna be situations where a construction site, we don't, if they were building a single-family home, we don't need a full-blown construction plan. There's, there are certain situations where that's not, where that's not required. However, if we're building a new hotel site, and the impact, off-site impacts can be great, a construction management plan may be appropriate. And so the building official's gonna have discretion on when that is and is not needed. Temporary toilet facilities. It sounds like, uh, why are we regulating that? But you'd be surprised how many complaints we get from adjacent property owners who are complaining about smells, um, who are complaining about porta-potties getting put on the sidewalk, and they have to walk around them out into the street. There's just a lot of these things that you don't think about, but they are, they are an issue with our property owners and our, and our developer, and our contractors. "Construction sites must be kept clean. Contractor and owner shall replace all broken curbs, sidewalks, or other damaged public utilities or property." These are all things that aren't specifically addressed in our code, and so we're cleaning this up. Um, I wanna get to six, too, because this, this has become an issue in several sites. We don't have anything in our code that addresses temporary construction fencing. And I, I'm not gonna, again, I'm not gonna point out specific situations, but we, we, we have, um, issues when property owners put up a construction site, let's just say, six months before construction's gonna start. Or it stays up two months after construction's over. Or the construction fence gets put out into the right-of-way, and it's blocking our s- public, our sidewalks. Um, or a construction site is loaded down with ads up and down on the, on the fencing. There's things like this that we just need to get our arms around. And this ordinance is dealing with that. Specifically on the fencing, we're giving, when it can go up, when it needs to come down, how much of the fencing can be allocated towards advertising. And that, and, and this situation, we're suggesting twenty, twenty-five percent, I believe, only when the fence faces an arterial roadway, an arterial or collector roadway. We don't have a lot of those in the city. North Atlantic, Astronaut, A-one-A, Central.
So, so we're actually giving permission in our code to use the temporary construction fence for advertising?
We're recommending for your consideration that up to twenty-five percent of that fence area that faces an arterial or a collector road can be used for advertising. And typically, that would be under construction. It would be a, a, for leasing, uh, contractors, and things like that. So, um, but this is for discussion. This is what staff is recommending. Um, if, if you think it's not enough or too much, we, we're here to talk about that.
Mr. Chairman, you mind if I ask a question? These, uh, six proposed items, um, are they consistent with, um, what we might see in neighboring municipalities?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Anthony to, 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 um, um, jump in on that. But my experience is yes. I actually throttled the amount of advertising down from what may typically be allowed in other areas. I, I personally don't like a lot of advertising, and so I, I ratcheted that back a little bit.
I'm getting ready to ask him, John, what's the value added? If, if you got a construction site going on, and you got it fenced off, uh, unnecessary people out, what's the value added of putting advertising on the construction thing? You're trying to get a job done, get it over with, and leave?
Well, it's, it's, the value added is, is primarily, primarily for the property owner and the contractor, and, and, like leasing. You'd like to put a, for lease, I've, you've got a, a commercial project underway, and you're gonna have some offices or some retail. And you wanna get a head start on the leasing. For leasing information, call whoever. The contractor oftentimes likes to put his or her name on a sign under construction by Acme Construction. But, I mean, these are things you typically see on a, on a, on a construction site. So, for the community, I mean, the value could be information if you have a business who wants to potentially relocate. You have, you know who to contact. So, um, but Anthony, I mean, back to our, the original question of, is this typical of what other communities, um, regulate? And, and, um-
Is it question in general about construction management? Or is it about the advertising?
We've six items, are they consistent with what we would see in other municipalities?
Other municipalities do have more detailed, um, construction site management provisions. Frankly, there's, there's, there are building code provisions about building, and, but there are a lot of gaps regarding some of the common sense aspects of construction site management that, you know, kinda go under the radar screen with general code provisions. So some communities are proactive, dealing with express construction site management provisions that they can hold contractors accountable on the impacts that they, that they have when they're developing, um, on adjacent areas. So, the, you know, you wanna address, you wanna address the problems before they happen. The first aspect of having a construction management plan, that's what it's all about, is being very proactive. Try to understand the surroundings of where this construction project's gonna occur, and have a common sense construction management plan so everybody knows, you know, the rules when the construction goes on, and sometimes it's very disruptive to surrounding, surrounding property owner. The toilet facilities, it's, 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 you'll see it, it's common practice. Develop when contractors are out there, and they're gonna have people working on the job. They drop these toilet facilities wherever they feel like it's convenient. But having some common sense rules, um, in place, you know, helps the city, you know, control, again, the adverse impacts that may have on surrounding property owners. And also, you know, holding contractors and the property owner responsible for any, any, um, you know, inconveniences or nuisances that they may create while, while they're doing next construction because there tend to be complaints from surrounding property owners. Having rules in place, you know, give the city some tools to, you know, enforce, and try to keep peace in the neighborhoods. And same thing with final site cleanup and repair damage, while it's common sense that, yeah, when they're done doing their development, they'll clean up. Um, but you'd be amazed at how many times they've- Um, but you'd be amazed at how many times they don't clean up appropriately, or they don't clean up during the construction period. That could go on for a period of time. Having the code provision in place, holding the contractors, um, know responsible is, is good proactive, I think, measure to have on the code. Same thing with the weather. You think that contractors will do the responsible thing when there's tropical storms and hurricanes? You'd be amazed at how many times they don't. You know, having some basic provisions about, you know, removing certain, you know, hazardous things from the construction site, et cetera, et cetera. Having those provisions in the code give the city some, some teeth. Same thing with the temporary construction fence and all the, you know, soil runoffs and following that, and the impact on stormwater systems. I have one particular city that put in similar provisions in its night and day compared to, you know, guessing about what the rules are, or tell contractors to do the thing, and staff going out there telling contractors, "Can't do this," and not having rules in place. The rules in place in advance, um, you know, give, give the contractors very clear heads-up and guidance, what, what kind of behavior the city expects contractors to engage in while they're doing construction. So, it's been very successful in another community that I re- that I represent, um, since the rules have gone in place, um, there haven't been any, um, any problems. So when I was asked to help with this issue, is what you, what you have.
So, I, I guess that kind of answers my question. My concern was, uh, number one, is this consistent with what we would see in other places? And is this comprehensive enough? Or are we going to be dealing with this later on about drilling down a little bit further and getting more definitive so that we know how to, we know how the city can go about enforcing?
I think it's, it's fairly comprehensive and hits some of the major, the major points of contention, or, you know, you know, conflict that occurs. But I, I want to draw your attention to the first problem there, construction management plan. You know, this ordinance doesn't cover every possible, you know, adverse impact in advance, but requiring contractors, when they're doing significant projects, to present a construction management plan, the approval by staff, that, this is the op- that gives the staff the opportunity to address those aspects that are not specifically spelled out in the code. That a unique for a specific project. So when they come in and the contractor pulls their, lets pull their building permit, the building department would say, "Well, you need to have your constructive management plan along with it," and, you know, cross the T's, dot the I's, and, you know, try to keep the community safe and, and reduce nuisances.
It, it's, it's probably here and I've missed it. Uh, you know, heavy truck construction, you know, there's our section in here that says they've got to smooth it down and repave it as necessary if they look up the paper. I didn't find it, but it might still, it might be there. I, I just noticed that when, when, uh, heavy equipment needs around for these construction works, you get a little further than the pavement. I guess we tend to look at that as normal wear and tear, and we'll pave it later when the regular frequency occurs.
Yeah.
But, uh, I'd like to see something with the effects that they got to leave the pavement the way they found it. It shouldn't be, we, we shouldn't be waiting around for the city to do its regular maintenance and stuff along.
Lamar, if you go to page three of eight in the ordinance?
Okay.
Paragraph four.
Where, in, in here?
Yes, in the, in the draft ordinance, three of eight.
Three of eight?
Yeah. Yep, and you go to pa- paragraph four.
Four. Found it. Got it, I'm there.
Okay. "You read through that paragraph, 'The contractor and owner, upon completion of the project, shall immediately remove all walkways, debris, and other obstructions and leave such public property in as good a condition as it was before work was commenced, and shall replace all broken curbs, sidewalks, or other damaged public utilities or property to the satisfaction of the building official.'"
But that's, that's curbs and sidewalks.
And public property.
Does public property get it? Is that the, the pavement that I'm, I'm worried about?
I believe so.
And that, that's, that's, that's all, I think, but, I mean, the chairman has a good point. I mean, we could put paving in there as well, so it's a specific statement.
It'd be good, I think. Yeah.
That's an easy word to insert.
That's all I heard. Well, okay, I'll, uh, ask the board, anything?
On the, um, the signage on the fence, the twenty-five percent, I think it would be better just to put maybe three signs, four signs, as opposed to a percentage, where now you, you know, the builder, you know, obviously seeing, um, I'm, you know, maybe three or four as opposed to twenty-five percent, because then you, you have to have a discussion with someone about what's twenty-five percent and what's thirty.
Mr. Thorpe, can I share a thought, something? If you say, "Okay, we're going to have three or four signs," and, and you don't do anything about regulating the size of the signs, then you could be in a, you could have four signs covering the entire spot, the entire fence, where if you get, if you designate a percentage, then you limit that. You see what I'm saying?
I do. Okay, I thought he was referring to twenty-five percent of the fence you can use for the sign. It's twenty-five percent of the screening material.
Okay.
So, the, whatever, whatever the screening material is, if you do that,
Yeah, I don't know.
Are, are...
Opaque, um...
No more than twenty-five percent of that can actually have, um, information, um, limited to the project owner.
Okay.
It doesn't authorize them to install signage. It's going to be on the screening material. If you see some contractor have the contractor name on the screening material, and they might put, uh, the name of the project coming, if it's actually on the screening material.
Yeah, for example, if you have a, let's say, a two-hundred-foot-long site and it's going to be fenced and it's four feet, so four feet by two-hundred is eight hundred square feet. So, as this is written, they could have a quarter of that two-hundred square feet of advertising, if you will. Again, if it's...
Signage, not like that.
Of, of signage. I'm not sure. Let, let me make sure how it's worded. Site information, onsite information of the project. Of the project. So we can't have, uh, you know, Taco City down in, uh... Yeah.
You doing anything else?
I like it.
Yes, sir. As I read through this ordinance, this very much falls into play with, uh, BMP, best management practices. And usually in the general terms and conditions of many, uh, construction projects that I've reviewed to, to bid, all of these items are listed in, in there for, for medium-sized to very large-size project. All of these items are in here. This is almost like a page out of the general terms and conditions out of those sections of construction. So, everything I read in here is very, very accurate, and these are the things they do need to pay attention to. And, and I do agree, the city does need a stick so they can walk in on those sites and make sure that these things are being done.
I have nothing to add, except that, you know, it, it feels to me now that, uh, the city attorney and the staff have done their due diligence, they've done the right research together, the way, the way it should be. Maybe we had asked. Yes, that's an idea. It's no game, it's a bigger burden.
I'm not going to want to add. I think everybody said it all. They get a good idea of the person we're dealing with, whether or not we add pavements or not, and I'm good to say.
All right. Then, uh, what else do we need to do? Oh, are we done?
I guess we need to have a public, uh, public, if there's any public input, then we'll need a rec- a motion.
Public input. All right, you've been around a lot of constructing, anything we ought to add? Yeah, yeah, you, you can pick one, you know, and just, you can go anywhere with it, I get it. All right. Let's have a motion then, to approve this ordinance, or recommend approval of the ordinance with the addition of pavement repair. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make that motion. Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. All or all?
Mr. Russell?
For.
Mr. Price?
For the motion.
Ms. Denny?
For the motion.
Mr. Stroud?
For the motion.
And Mr. Thorpe?
For the motion.
All right. This gets the, gets us to be a part of the agenda for reports and open discussion. Anything from, from the open discussion you need to add?
I, I've got one item.
Okay. Oh, was he gone?
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll wing it. Do you have some of the details? You, you might want to jump in here. It's for the workshop. Okay, we'd like to, yes, exactly. Okay. Yes. You have a flyer in front of you? We would, um, encourage each of you to be in attendance. It's an opportunity for the community to have some, um, input and to understand some of the activities that we're undertaking.
Yeah, we had, we had a very successful phase, or, sorry, the first workshop we did a couple of days ago, um, was very successful, so this will be the second workshop. Um, I believe it's December nineteenth, I think it'd be. Um, and it will be at the community center. And, yeah, we'd, we'd love it if you guys came out. We've got a video coming out, um, that, that filmed at the first workshop. They did some filming around the city, interviewed some people, and, uh, that should be coming out here in a couple of days. But, yeah, it's in connection with that NSF grant, and, uh, the more people who show up, the better. Yeah, we really appreciate it.
That's it. Thank you.
Good project, pardon if I'm...
Yeah, there's some heavy hitters in there.
Anything else? Any other items to be dealt with?
I, I do want to publicly thank the chairman for coming to our city council meeting last night. Actually, uh, Lamar had an opportunity to get up and address the council on, uh, on several items, and I think his input was, was welcomed and appreciated. And so, uh, thank you again, Lamar, publicly for, for being there. It was, it was great.
I can never resist telling stories. So, I, so I, I did it. Thank you. All right, uh, then, uh, let's, let us be adjourned.